Commissioner's Court. In the meantime, Capital One's Port Arthur Branch Bank downtown Central Business District, located in 441 Austin Avenue is our newest corporate partner. The management over there is Sister Jeanne Carroll. And the phone number for Capital One's many services is (409) 984-3180. (984) 3180. We want to thank Capital One, this bank, for their confidence in the Breeze Radio Station, the Breeze Nation that we serve for their confidence. Judy's French Market Sandwich Shop and Deli, located at 3057th Street, open Monday through Saturday, serving a wide variety of foodstuffs, cooked and uncooked, from breakfasts to dinners. And they cater too. No, they don't cater. They will fix you up. And you pick it up and carry it out. Judy says it all. For more information about the prices, menus, and hours, there's two phone numbers, (409) 982-3512, (982) 3512, or (982) 3522, (982) 3522. Judy's French Market Sandwich Shop and Deli, 3057th Street in Port Arthur, Texas. And the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Inc., Port Arthur Lunina Chapter. They are, once again, sponsoring the cotillion annually. This is the 2016 cotillion. They will be featured on Saturday, March 5th, 6:30 PM, at the Bob Bauer Civic Center, 3401 Cultural Center Drive, over there behind the Port Arthur Library, Highway 73 and 9th Avenue. And this is scheduled to be a, not scheduled, but it's supposed to be an elegant event. That's what the marquees say, for dress and dance and entertainment, fine food. They're gonna have twenty days. And at the door, there's one of our very own, the Flash. And Destiny. Yeah, yeah, Princess Destiny, waltzing across the Civic Center floor. Y'all gonna hear more about Destiny, I'm telling you right now. Without you, Flash, because I can see her name in the marquees and in lights. If this is not your first... If this is not your first cotillion, take part in a fine night of food and entertainment. There are two phone numbers and the names I want to give you to, for y'all to call. Soror Underwood at (409) 722-8023. (722) 8023. And Soror Deborah Henry, (409) 962-9348. (962) 9348. Okay. Using opinions expressed on this program are solely those studio guests, callers, listeners. Guests and hosts does not necessarily affect the using opinions of this station and its management. Now, before we even get started, I'm gonna put your mic on, okay? I'm gonna put your mic on before we even get started. And I don't want you waving me off.
I'm not drinking anything, you already have it on.
Not that, yeah, well, before we get started, I'm gonna tell you right now, like you did yesterday, you kept waving me off. Waving me off.
I'm waving you now, because you looked at the caller's phone to call.
Now, that was a personal call, I can tell you that right now. Somebody didn't want to go on the air, either one of them wanted to hear my numbers. But...
Well, I didn't answer.
I answered it and they hung up. All right, now...
Call the caller back. (409) 982-0247.
Yeah, call back caller. But all this, this damn and hell, I'm not gonna have that today. Okay? We can express ourselves and be respectful. And I'm not gonna have that bashing and all that, I'm telling you right now. I like for people to express themselves, and I like for them to be factual, and I like for them to have an opinion. But we're gonna, but this is a Breeze Radio Station. You, every time, and we have certain rules and regulations that we deal with, processes and procedures. And we're gonna be respectful. And I don't ask people their names, I don't ask them where they're calling from. And I realize that they have a lot of things they want to vent about. So I'm gonna take charge today, okay?
I don't know why you're telling me that, I understand that.
Okay, all right. All right. Mr. Mosley, you have the mic.
Uh, give me some volume now, brother.
They always gotta hear theyself.
That's right. Now you're talking. I just get like Ricky Anderson, I gotta tell you what, how to operate around here.
You ain't got no gun and no taser now, so don't start, don't start, don't start no stuff, and it won't be no stuff, okay? It won't be no stuff.
I don't worry about, you know, because I don't need a taser, I'm packing. I don't play, I don't, I don't, I don't give warnings, that's a warning.
So what you trying to say? Stop going over here!
There's a line in the sand, there's a line in the sand.
I was born four thousand years ago. I once saw a head of cabbage slap a cockatiel rabbit.
I still don't understand that one. Still haven't got that one. I'm trying to figure that out. Thank you, Tink. Uh, yeah, listen, gentlemen, I appreciate coming back before you get some folks that been getting calls on yesterday, from yesterday, or last night as well, concerning some things that I talked about, maybe turned it down a little bit, got a little bit too much feedback. Things I was talking about on yesterday, thank you very much, I was talking about on yesterday, and about things going on in the campaign and everything. And I think I was, I think I was supposed to do that because there was friends that passed by the house, and indicated that some friends of mine and people that I've helped along the way since I'd been on council, because we have a lot of programs in the city that we do, and folks are affected by a lot of these programs. And some of them were environmental, environmental is involved, where the city staff go out and look at your property and deem it to be out of compliance, and the city begins putting things in place to shut you down, your operation, penalize you, fine you, and all of that. And this one gentleman who worked real diligently for three weeks to keep the city off of him, giving him time to clean up his property and straighten up around his place and his business and everything, had happened to read the article in the paper that was, that we talked about regarding Mr. Rich Mackey's letters indicating that one, that I was trying to impress people that I was the county commissioner violating election laws. And another one, article he wrote indicating that since I owned a radio station, I was violating FCC regulations by being a radio station owner and running for public office. I'll kind of reiterate that, so for those who didn't hear it yesterday, you know, I'll make it known again that the letter indicated regarding my, trying to impress people that I was the county commissioner, because I didn't put on my signs the word "for," which is Steven Mosley, "for" county commissioner. And as I indicated to the listeners yesterday, as I indicated to Ms. Sherry Coons, who wrote the story, and to many others, that, look, it was a printing error, okay? I don't make the signs. You give the folks the information, they've been doing it for years, and the people that I know who are in business, who did my signs, they're good people. You know, they've been in business a long time, they're doing very well, they've got tremendous equipment they work with, but it was a printing error. I had nothing to do with it. But, at the same token, as I indicated, I take full responsibility for that, okay? You know, it's no excuse. It got by me. I should have read it, it's my campaign, I should have read everything from top to bottom, and made sure that my signs were accurate and according to the law. Now, with that said, it was regarding the letter that I sent out indicating the differences between my opponent and me. What my opponent has been doing for eight years and what I have been doing. And through the entire body of the letter, there seemed to be no argument about that, but the only argument was that I didn't put the word "for" in the letter. Okay? So that's done. I changed the signs, I threw out everything else, all of the advertisement that we had to make sure we had nothing that would be a violation or would irk the people who had a problem with it. So now I say, let's deal with the issues. The issues is the letter that I wrote indicating that, the differences between my opponent and me. And those things are that they had not been addressed, and that's why I'm running. Because ten years ago in 2004, I indicated that I would run again after I was not successful in my first attempt, running against Mr. Hallmark back in 2004. Some of the same things are evident today. I indicated that the canal has not been dug, has not been cleaned, brought down to some forty something feet, the canal behind the city hall, that would allow us to bring in more ship traffic. Because the ships that are big ships wanting to come in here with all sorts of import-export information business, they have to unload other places because they can't get through the channel because the ships are too heavy, so they'll get bogged down in the silt. That was ten years ago. I've been out, I've been away from it for ten years. Same thing over in Sabine, the people have got one way in, one way out, they need an excess out. It is also a very important business channel for us, for the city, going back from Sabine Pass to Galveston. That has not been developed, the road. Okay, that's been over ten years. No one's saying anything, nothing happening, until just recently, within the last two weeks, now you're beginning to see in the paper that, hey, we're gonna do something, we're looking at doing something, all right? We're talking about abatement contracts benefiting folks in South County, you know, employees and businesses. There's a lot of people who constantly tell us at this radio station, they can't get jobs here in the county. And businesses are telling us, we can't get contracts in the county. And there's a reason for that, because there's no one raising sand, complaining or challenging the businesses and/or folks that get us hired. There's a reason why I'm running. So ten years later, 2014, 15, 16 now, I said I would run again. But in the meantime, during that period of time, that my opponent's been on the bench for eight years over there with the county, who left from the city and went to the county, I went to the city. I got elected, sit on City Hall bench for a year and a half, and everything I promised the taxpayers in my, my, my campaign platform, I've done. So I was completed. And all things are in place. You know, we wanted as a city manager, and I'm not saying I did it by myself, but that's what I pledged to do, was aggressively make sure that we get it done. We got a city manager who's gonna fight it out and tell the city council and the city, the mayor and everybody to go suck a egg, you know, when they get out of line with him. Because we needed a strong city manager who's gonna come in, put his foot down, stop some of the practices that council has been doing over the years, some of the true violations of the law, because we've got it on paper. We've got it on paper, but no, no one really has pushed it, and that's what I was doing. I'm not saying that I'm the only person, but I'm working with those folks and we pushed the issue. Councilman Scott, Councilman Lewis, and myself have done that, and folks don't like it. But we have to clean up the government, we got to find out where our money is, and we've got to start responding to the areas that the taxpayers want results. That's what I've been doing for the last year and a half. It didn't take me eight years to get it all done. It only took a year and a half. And at the end of that year and a half, it made ten years for me to run for the Commissioner's Court again. So to answer those folks' questions who wanted to know, why'd he leave it a year and a half? Well, that's what the newspaper's been pushing. They're doing this to distract you from the issues. And the issues that I raised is what my opponent has not been able to answer every freaking forum that we have. That's the problem. Taxpayers want to know, what kind of answers do you have to solve the issues of the citizens? The citizens. That's what we got to deal with. And they can come with all kind of stuff, like I didn't put the word "for" on my sign, okay? And I'm trying to act like I'm the commissioner now and all of that. Okay, that's enough. That's enough for the foolishness. Let's talk about the issues. And that's what I want to talk with you again today, about some of the things that we need to know. And that is, you need to recognize who the players are. I was told a long time ago, once you know who the players are, then you'll be able to figure out the game. And folks, they've been playing a game on you and me for a long time. But here, thankful for this radio station, we have an opportunity to answer back, light speed. So when something is said in the newspaper that they're using Rich Mackey to push their agendas, you got a radio station that has an answer for that, that can respond to that, that can also say, wait a minute, wait a minute, we got taxpayers and citizens here who have a legitimate concern. Let's deal with that. Well, saying that to say this, I got a caller last night, it's pretty late, pretty late, and I started out to ask, well, I didn't answer. And the wife said, you need to answer the caller, maybe it's something important. I said, well, it's kind of late, I'll get with it tomorrow. I said, well, if somebody called this late, they really need to talk to you. Well, I did, I called the caller back. And the gentleman was saying, and he called to apologize to me because he had been dealing with a decision he needed to make. And it was between me and my opponent, Commissioner Senegal. He said, I've been, I've been tussling with this for a good while. He said, man, you know, and you're my friend, and Senegal's my friend. And I said, yeah, Senegal's my friend too. I mean, we may not like me now because I'm running for the position, but I grew up with him, in the same neighborhoods, you know, in this family now, I love his sisters and families, and sisters and families and brothers, we knew each other. But it's not about a personal thing, you know, it's not a personal thing. We're running for the position because I think I can do better. And for those folks who have this mentality that it's me against him, it's not. I never said Congressman Senegal was a bad guy, never said it. Never said in the past, I don't say it now, I don't believe in dirty politics. I never said that Commissioner Senegal did anything wrong. Didn't say it then, I'm not saying it now. Only thing I'm saying that I have been saying is I think that he has not been doing enough as an eight-year incumbent to benefit the citizens and taxpayers of Jefferson County, and I can do better. That's all. And if folks think that he's doing a great job, then you don't vote for me. That's simple. But if you think things need to be better, if you think things can change, if you're somebody out there walking around, riding the bicycle, and you feel like you should be having a job, and you should be driving a car, you should be living in a better home, there's opportunity for you, but no one is fighting for you, for your contracts in the industry, in these refineries, in these corporations, then you have an option, and that's me. That's somebody who's willing to fight for you, okay? That's what I'm saying. So the caller I got said that they were really upset with themselves because they had, were tussling with that decision, and they realized for his grandson. They say, Papa, why won't you vote for Mr. Mosley? Well, because Mr. Mosley helped you with all your stuff, he helped you with this, he helped you with that, he was there fighting for you with the, with the, the deal that happened with the Edison Square issue. So why don't you vote for him? Well, maybe why don't you vote for him and then Mama can vote for Mr. Senegal? And what I got was that, no, he thought about it, the deal was that I have to look at the issues. And when I looked at it, I realized, you know, that he hadn't done much, he hadn't done anything for us. When we needed him for the Ebola scare, he was absent. When we needed him to speak out for the Zilghas, he supported them. Mr. Mosley was against it. When we stepped out for the forensic audit, Mr. Mosley was for it. He said it was probably, he felt like it was a witch hunt, and said that he looked like it was just going out to Port Arthur and Boemar, not dealing with the facts, not dealing with the issues. And we talk about property taxes, Mr. Mosley's got a plan to raise property taxes and help the county reduce the debt, and anything from Commissioner Senegal. And they say, well, you know, we're not getting hired, we're not getting jobs. Well, Mr. Mosley's got a plan, just in plan, that he's been pushing, okay? So some of these things is what I was talking with this caller about 10:00, 10:30 last night. And I thought I'd just share it, which is just so you know, that it's nothing personal about myself against Commissioner Senegal, it's not. It's just that what I see is a different way of taking South County to the next level, and not sitting here in South County for another four years and doing the same thing that we've been doing the last eight years. And it's pretty much nothing. So I'm open for phone calls, you're welcome to call me, the number's area code (409) 982-0247. Comments or questions, I'm open for that. But in the meantime, let me just share something with you, what I said that I was told a long time ago, when you want to make a difference, and when you want to do something that's going to shake up a lot of things, you need to know the players. You need to know the players, they're just like baseball teams and football teams, you know, when one team, especially in the championship games, and this is a championship fight, folks, the championship games, coaches know about the other team's players, and they have a tendency to know their weaknesses, know how they lean forward too much on the line, and you can tell when they're gonna stunt, or when they're gonna sit back, drop back in pass protection. That's for the guys who understand, and ladies who understand football. You know, they have a tendency to know when you're gonna do a screen play, or you're gonna run up the middle for, you know, a run play. So you got to know the players. And once you know the players, you have a better chance of defending yourself against what they do.
You're listening to KSAP, 96.9 LPFM in Port Arthur, Texas. Studio phone number is area code (409) 982-0247.
All right. The reason I'm saying that is because I recently got a flyer, and the flyer is inviting folks to a fundraiser for Michael Shane Senegal for Jefferson County Commission Precinct 3. And it's hosted by Judge Carl Griffith, Senator Carl Parker, Randy Reese, Paul Beard, Osman Sawadee, Roosevelt Petrie Jr., and Hubert Oxford. Now, let me quickly say, there's nothing wrong with that, don't get me wrong. But here again, as I said, the deal is, is to know who the players are. Now, many of us been hearing about, they call him Boss Hog at an internet site, peepolitics.com, peepolitics3.com, where there's some information out there about some of these folks who they affiliated with, with the PAC, the PAC group, the 100 PAC or the PAC 100. Well, those are folks that has been, felt that they support certain people that they supported on council, and you can see what has been happening on city council, as Councilman Scott and Councilman Lewis and myself have been tussling with those folks on city council for the benefits of folks in precincts one and four, okay? That's precincts one and four, that is the west end and the south end of Port Arthur, where your streets have just been destroyed and dilapidated and, and lost opportunities and the high unemployment rates. That's us, we've been fighting for that against some other folks on the side of the bench, you know, council. And the other side, which is who the folks that Senator Parker and them have supported, and with the Port Arthur News endorsements have supported those same folks. Also, the Port Arthur News, I see today endorsed Mr. Rod Carroll, I believe it is, that you heard earlier, caller saying that Mr. Carroll was found to be using off-color language. Excuse me?
Derogatory.
Yeah, derogatory language regarding African-Americans as a substantial law enforcement representative, those things that you have to think about. So when you put the people in place, Senator Parker, Senator, Judge Griffith, and Osman Sawadee, and Mr. Ackberry, and, and folks like that, you begin to see, you're tying, you're connecting the dots. And you can see some of the things and issues that are happening in a way where now you can see, we see what's going on now. And a lot of these folks are in position to make those things happen, and sometimes it happens for special interest groups. You want to say a thing, Tink?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'd like to say something. Howdy partners. I, I am not gonna be diplomatic when I say this, but this is, this is the thing. For those of you out there that have been calling Mr. Mosley or either calling Mr. Senegal, and sharing your personal views, your personal experiences with Mr. Mosley or with Mr. Senegal, and if, if you have the facts of situations that have happened, then you need to air that information to the public. You cannot, and, and, and Mr. Mosley, I know we've shared some things, but the thing is this, without a bashing situation of, well, I heard this, I heard this, I heard that. Don't, if, as a candidate, I wouldn't want you to call me and tell me something that you heard, and then come and say to me, well, I, I don't, I don't want you to tell nobody, but this is what's happening, and, and I just want you to know. Because I'm not gonna take what you say as face value, because I know politics is nasty. And there are things that people will say as a rumor, as a gospel, to a candidate to get them to say something out publicly that will not be true, and then get sued or get messed around. You can see that happening right now in the, in the, the national election. Somebody says something, and then you gotta prove that it's said, then they can't find the fact sheet that they said it. So be very careful with that. Now, if you out there who are listening, if you have something that you need the public to know, and you know it to be a fact, you got lawsuits, you didn't, you didn't been told this to your face by a candidate, and I'm including Mr. Mosley in this too. If he did you something and you can substantiate he did you wrong, then you need to publicly say it. Don't be calling Mr. Senegal, or either don't be calling Mr. Mosley, telling Mr. Mosley something about what happened with Mr. Sen... That's dirty politics. And, and which, I'm just being factual. This is the way I see it. I don't play these games, and I'm not gonna allow you to do it.
And I don't, I don't like it either, you know, everybody make mistakes, and, you know, and if a person's got a sordid history, that's, that's, that's gonna be something that, that the individuals who've been damaged have to deal with, it's not, not for me to deal with, I, you know, I just, I just don't do that. I think based on what my, my history and body of work is, that it stands for itself. And if, and if someone...
See, that's it, that's it. The qualifications and the, the work in the community, those are the things. Because, because when I look at, when I hear stuff like about, it was a couple of the presidential candidates and, and even some of the senate candidates, and somebody'll say something, and first of all, your spouse did this, and your spouse did that, your spouse ain't running. I need to know what the qualifications is. I had a caller yesterday that, that really kind of took a little thunder out of my, my statement, he said, what's the platform? And I kept telling him, I said, that's what we need to get to, that's what we need to get to. What's your platform? What are you gonna do that's different? And those are the kinds of things that we need to discuss.
I agree.
Mackey and all that stuff, I'm, I'm, look, that's, I didn't even deal with that crap. Excuse me, go.
Well, the only, the only thing, when, when you talk about issues like that when it comes to the press, is simply, they use their medium to justify their concerns. And those are the things that we have to be mindful about, because as in this article that he indicated, he says, Senegal should remain Jefferson County Precinct 3 Commissioner. In the first sentence, he say, in the long list of elections that our residents will be subject to over the next few months, one that should not be taken lightly is the County Commission Precinct 3 election.
But see, that is not a concern. That is, you see, you, 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 understand me clearly, see, because I studied that stuff, journalism too, but that is not a concern. That is an innuendo to indoctrinate people that I'm close to the, to, to the vest. I know better than anybody else.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. The point is, is that there's enough room for those people to consider those to be signals. The point is, is that there's enough room for those people to consider those to be signals. It's kinda like signals when we sit up on city council and folks come to us and say, perfect example, perfect example. We're, we're trying to establish some affordable housing...
Perfect example.
For citizens in Port Arthur. For people who live in Port Arthur, people who work in Port Arthur, people just trying to make it, brother. And here's what some of the folks came to the, to the microphone and saying, we don't want no income housing in Port Arthur. I thought we wanted gated communities, and I thought we wanted market rate hous... Now, you listen, these are words, are code words that you have to understand. When certain people use these words, they're talking to a select group of people, and they're telling them, be mindful, we don't want a certain group of people downtown. We want market rate housing. Do you know what market rate housing is? Market rate housing is around two, three hundred thousand dollars a house. Now, now, hang on, now, where are you gonna find somebody who's gonna build a three hundred thousand dollar house between Fifth Street and Eighth Street, between Atlanta and Nashville, right here in Port Arthur, by Lamar State College, Port Arthur? You're never gonna find it. But if, hang on, but if you do build housing, where do you find a gated community in Port Arthur that's gonna be with that type of housing? Brother, it's not here, it's on Pleasure Island. And when it's on Pleasure Island, what do you do? You can drive over there and look at it, but you sure not gonna drive over there and drive around it, because what? It's closed. That's why they call it gated community. And only the select few will get there. So when you see these words, these are code words, you have to look through. And that's what I'm saying, when someone is sitting on the county commissioner's seat and all this is going on, if you don't understand the code words, if you're not following the lingo, if you're in a group of people like these folk I just named, and you put the dots together, you begin to quickly see, you can't have somebody like a, like a Mosley up there because he understands that, he understands business, he understands the lingo. And if nothing else, he's gonna rattle a can. He gonna kick a can, he gonna get somebody's attention, and now he got a radio station, brother, that's why he wanted to shut me down, that's why he wanted, this guy wanted to say that I got a radio station and I'm running for public office. It's against MCC violations, which he lied, and he gonna have to answer for that, Rich Mackey. But that's because now you got someone who can fire back at him. Now you got a mechanism that the taxpayers have that they can say, let's talk about this some more, let's find out what he's saying, let's find out what he mean. Why is Senegal tied up in all this? Why is he connected to these people? We know how these folk think, we seen what they have done, we see the programs that they put together, we follow the code words. Why is he with them? They gotta keep him quiet, they warning him because they can get things passed.
And that has been the history in this city.
That's what a caller called in, said, we got a history of this kinda stuff that's been going on that we need to clean up.
Right.
But what happens is, we keep voting him in office, why? Because they our friends. And that's the call that came to me last night, said, look, man, I got, I woke up from that, and my grand, my grandson shook me up, he said, you know the stuff that children say, they can get your doggone attention. And that what he say, he did it, he did everything, he did all this stuff for you, Papa. Why you won't vote for you? Said, well, what does, what does Senegal do for you? And he say, he thought, he say, you know, nothing. He said, son, you absolutely right. I gotta call Mr. Mosley and apologize to him because he's right out of the mouth of babes. So I'm just saying, these are kinda things that the conversations that I get, when people are walking the street and they stop me, or they see me, or they wanna make a comment about what's going on, and I tell, look, don't, I don't wanna hear nothing negative about Commissioner Senegal, 'cause that's not my thing. If you wanna stay on the issues, let's talk about the issues. If you wanna talk about why you're not having a job, let's talk about it. If you're talking about why you can't get a contract, then we can talk about it. If you're talking about why we don't have the, the Sabine pass that rolled open, we can talk about that. If you wanna talk about why we not getting economic development coming in from the port, we can talk about it. I don't wanna hear the mess, I wanna hear some results. I wanna hear about how we gonna get out of this mess, how we gonna get South County on board and moving. And I've been promoting plans to do that. And that's with the letter that I sent out, that they decided, that they, the newspaper, it's Rich Mackey, and that they were gonna try and destroy me with it. And that's what he wrote in the newspaper, that he got two problems with me. One, that I left too early, a year and a half, well, hey, I got an article about Rich Mackey, he was with the news and some other area, he was there only a year and a half, and he was moving there a ten year. So what's your point?
And he didn't volunteer to be moved.
No comment.
Anyway.
Yeah, no comment. No, no, we'll, we'll find out, because some folks are researching, are studying his, his, his history, so maybe we'll know. But in him writing that letter, uh, that he read, that, 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 that article he wrote, he says, secondly, I strongly oppose any individual that is in the media at any level who wants to be a part of politics. Having your own newspaper, or radio station, or television station offers too much temptation to use your medium for your own political agenda and gain. And, as he said, is a direct violation, a direct violation of MCC regulations.
Hold it right there. Hold it right there, because let's, let's, without him, is this, is this a media that I'm holding up?
There's a media you're holding in your hand.
Every time the publisher and the...
Editor.
Editor puts in...
Opinion.
In that, in that editorial...
Editorial.
No name in the bottom, okay? It's not an opinion. It is an endorsement in politics.
Mm-hmm.
In politics.
Well, they say that's, that's the paper's position.
Let, 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 let me finish. For the publisher to say that you shouldn't do that, the paper does that. I mean, I mean, it's like George Bush, you know, like, like, about, uh, about...
Just picking out of both sides of the mouth. It's good, it's good for them, but it's not good for me.
And see, that is the influence that I've been seeing about South County, about Port Arthur in particular, because this is our city, that there have been and has been, and it has, to me, it ain't got nothing to do with racism. It has to do with a political structure that has been corrupt since I was channeled in nineteen seventy two, seventy-one to run against Al Price.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, Al and I sat down and talked, and I became his steering committee chairman on Lamar's campus.
Yes.
But they had flown me to Washington, they had brought me back, the news media was there. I said, I'm not filing. I said, because I know what y'all doing. And this has been Port Arthur politics, not, not the, not, not the internet thing. This has been a thing that has been going on in this city from a long time ago, all the way back to Hayes, and even, uh, uh, Artis, and, and what's that other guy's name that was here, um, before Hayes? Uh, 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 when I was out in, 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 here in school, um, I remember listening to them talk about how there was a group of people in this city that ran this city, and they were gonna continue to run this city. I'm gonna tell you something, you see like that fire, that fire station, that fire station that we tried to get up there on Memorial Avenue? People don't realize that even in the deeds, with, with the Hayes boys and everything, there are certain sections in this city that was determined to not to have African Americans, Negroes at that time, to even buy the properties. So when I look at this newspaper and listen, and, and look at that, uh, council meeting on, on the web the other, uh, yesterday, and to see this stuff about the house, there's two, uh, that, that was some very good questions asked. And I applaud EDC for what they wanna do, but EDC also is run by who? Some African Americans. Okay? I remember approaching EDC when we were trying to get funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, let me finish. Our city council is, is mostly African Americans. We look at the city, there was a whole transition of African Americans that began to work for the city and the county. And there is a systematic conspiracy to keep Uncle Toms and Aunt Thomas scenes and take back what they left. And if we don't understand that, okay, I was here when, 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 when James and them came through. There was a whole corruption that was going on in this city.
Well, man, let me, let me, let me see if I can take you back a little bit, 'cause I'm gonna give, take you back to a time that a lot of folk, well, you know...
To your daddy.
African, African Americans were active back in June of nineteen ninety-two, uh, regarding United States Justice Department, the chief voting section of the Civil Rights Division under Mr. Mark Katz.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, this was a case that ended up in United States Supreme Court, with City of Port Arthur, Texas appellate versus the United States of America, Ann Abraham Douglas, Elgin Jenkins, Walter Mosley, Willie B. Lewis, were the appellate. And when folks had to get depositions...
Mm-hmm.
They just, they sit on trial, on court, had to sit in the seat and the man ask them questions, and tell you, ask them questions. Here's, here's, here's what I'm getting at, when we have representation that don't fight for you...
Mm-hmm.
Things can happen.
Mm-hmm.
They were talking to the mayor, and this was Mayor Sadler at the time, and it...
That's what, yeah.
In his deposition...
Yeah.
When it regards to the Voting Rights Case, Mosley versus Sadler...
Mm-hmm.
He said, that he and others, this was, see, 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 E Ma, E Mayor Sadler's deposition in the Voting Rights Case, Mosley versus Sadler, he said, the mayor, he said that he and others got together with private industry and, and asked them not to hire blacks.
Conspiracy, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Don't start, man, he's letting him finish. He says, now, this is all sitting on the court, on the bench, talking to appellate and jurors, when blacks were unable to find gainful employment, they would have to relocate.
Hello?
This attitude is still alive today in the world, brother. Unemployment in the suburban citizen is, 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 they still single digits, and here is double digits.
Gee, you wasn't...
So no one sits up there in, not only a council, but commissioners' court and say nothing. Black folk remain unemployed. They remain unemployed in industry, they remain unemployed in corporate America, they remain unemployed in their neighborhoods, they remain unemployed in their children's eyes, they remain unemployed in America, man. It's time for a change, brother.
The very year I came back to, to Port Arthur and made my presentation to city council, and I had an African American, uh, uh, councilperson who's sitting on the bench now, challenged me about what I said when I challenged Artis and told him even I had to leave this city to get employed. And I'm back now, and I'm gonna start raising hell, 'cause y'all doing the same thing. Keep it locked. Uh, go ahead, caller.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and I want to be, okay, not the first, but among the first, to thank you all for this teaching moment. And it's not only history, it's contemporary affairs. And there is that strain and building those bridges between what was the past, the recent past, and the present, and instructing the bridge to the future. If we're not vigilant, we will have the same bridge that was back in the past in the future. And, and, and all of what you say, and House giving you the credit that you're, that you're doing, you, and I joked about you being referred to as the prophet, and saying that, that all the shenanigans are going to come.
Yeah, I did say that, didn't I?
They are here. At the same time, referring to you as Professor Americas, because your familiarity with the history would say, there's no reason to expect that it's not going to occur again. And what has happened, and it's to certain degrees, more or less, and I'm gonna use the word insidious, that, that word that appears to be something going on, but you can't quite put your finger on it, but it is going on, is what's taking place. And it's, it's just a modification, right, of what has happened in the past. It's changed how they do what they do, but it is still the puppet masters.
And, 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 and to equate what you're saying, in the national news, the, the whole, and you heard me talking to, um, Mr. Hayes, um, Mr. Casey, I mean, and, um, Mr. Cole, is that about the Voters Rights Act and all. Trump and Rubio use these words in Carolina. The voters need to send the power structures a message.
Indeed.
And the voters here in Jefferson County need to send those persons that are the puppet masters a message. We not gonna take it no more, instead of sitting back and, and saying, well, it's okay. I saw the numbers, they said that over a thousand and some people voted in the Democratic primary on Monday, or was it...
How about that? How about that?
How about that? But see, what are they voting for?
There's...
For the same old status quo?
Unfortunately, something we won't know until after results are in, and, but as you all are saying, we, we can't afford to wait on that. We have to be, here's that word, proactive.
Proactive, which means that those peoples who, people who have been sitting on their laurels and waiting for the master to thump people behind the head and make them do right, the do right is in your vote.
It, and it should be in your DNA.
Boy.
You should, you should, but by now, if you've been here for at least, at least a couple of decades, that's all you need, because that, you know, he talked to, and, and I have this function, and this goes back to a radio program that, you know, she are more familiar with than many people, that being the shadow.
The, who knows the shadow, dude?
Okay, and, and just walking around and just listening, just listening, as you also say, and you hear from teenage, we haven't fixed this.
And they, and they gonna still, if we don't fix it, they gonna still have to do the same thing, leave here to find gainful and, and, and productive employment, and they gonna have to, at the same time, raise their family somewhere else, okay? Get their income somewhere else, and then the stigma on Port Arthur will be the same. Y'all know them people down in Port Arthur, they ain't gonna do a doggone thing, but talk trash, and they not gonna follow you.
You know, you mentioned the James Commission, so let's just, let's just keep it real, okay? The truth, and, and, and I got this information, not just from people of African American ancestry, not just people from Latino ancestry, people of Caucasian ancestry, and people from all over the country. Let's be real clear, both the triangle areas, not just Port Arthur, and other parts of the country is viewed as one of the most corrupt areas in the country. And this goes back, way back, to when there were only Caucasians in...
Look, 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 uh, AC, and, and, and you, you may not know, but I'm aware, prostitution, gambling, uh, money laundering, uh, African Americans who were fronting for Caucasians on the, on, on the so-called West Side, saying that they owned the property and they were the, uh, the manager, not the managers, but the owners. At the same time, there was, uh, a, a, a radical crime weave right here, even in the political system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? This ain't nothing new.
No, no, and, and so, you know, I, I really do take my hat off to the candidates, particularly the earnest candidates, because they are fighting multiple battles on multiple fronts, one of which is this area's history. And to change the economic, the economic situation in this area, you got to change that image.
You know, you know, the very first time, and, and this is what's happening with Mr. Mosley, and I endorse him, yes, I said it, this is something that's happening. The very, very, uh, and, and you gonna, you gonna be able to relate with, with what I'm saying. There was a systematic character assassination... There was a systematic character assassination brought by the media and politicians. Wrangle, Adam Clayton Powell, Jordan, Barbara Jordan, um, uh, Sissy Farathol, uh, Ben Barnes, and I'm talking about Caucasians there, uh, Yarbro, um, um.
Anne Richards.
Anne Richards, um, and, 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 um, uh, Shirley Chisholm.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Shirley, Shirley, Shirley Chisholm.
One that survived the character assassinations was Barack Obama.
It, it, it perhaps made the most, the most prophetic, um, success.
Success.
Because the others were, the others were, you know, in, in political terms, mortally damaged.
They was, they were ostracized.
Yeah.
And that is the same thing that's being done here. And I need, I need to say it to their face, I know y'all listening, but there are African Americans who are guilty of the same thing to try to character assassinate Mr. Mosley.
And, 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 you know, as I said yesterday, and I hope that it resonated, so I'll repeat it today. If we melt this thing down with Mr. Mackey in the newspaper, it's about controlling the message. And it is not just Mr. Mosley, it's the radio station. So, when we have these dialogues, try to be careful, and, and I appreciate your, your saying that to the listeners and the people who call in, because it is a, it's an ongoing effort to discredit and to disconnect a source of vital information to the community that has a different perspective than what is being played, in this case, reen- re-replayed. And, and Mr. Mosley, your such a statement about the whole issue, and that really comes down to this whole business of, of doublespeak and code words and all of that, creates you. Market value, market housing is in fact a loaded, coded state. And in this case, it's dishonest from the get-go, because it's giving an indication of the area which you're talking about, and they're implying houses in the two-hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar range, when the whole term says that the, the values of houses are tied to the market in which they exist, and they would exactly be the houses that they're talking about building. Because guess what? If you have a house in that area now, that's a single house at that, at that, at that income level, that house value is gonna be devalued down to the housing that surrounds it.
And then you realize that to even do that, there's a whole, a whole rezoning thing that has to go, there's a holding building structure, the situation that has to come into play.
It, it, it's a word game and a mind play and spin masters, just confusing the issue so that nothing gets done.
That's it. Caller, you know something?
That's it.
Recently, just last week, just, no, the early part of this week, there was a fire in Houston, in the, in one of the big housing complexes. Did you see that on the news?
Yes.
Okay. Correlate this, that was not the first time.
No.
There have been several in these large building complexes that are supposed to be affordable housing.
Yes.
We have on Highway three sixty-five now, and I went out there and went through it, it's beautiful. Okay? But just think of the danger it is in putting all these people together. A fire on Memorial and Twenty-Fifth Street in that complex puts people at risk.
It is, and, and, and let's, let's, let's look at that term, because it's another one that has been, that has been, it's, it's been manipulated, okay? And, and he takes you back to one of the people who worked in the government, her name is Catherine Austin Fitch.
Yes.
In Maynor, she was working in housing and urban development under the Bush-wanted ministry. And when they changed the definition of affordable housing from individual affordable housing unit to apartment complex.
And don't forget the key word, low income.
Low income. And her words were, and if you go to her website, tallari.com, you will find her saying that millions of taxpayers' dollars was wasted because just by either refurbishing or building more affordable individual homes or duplexes, discriminating nation's housing needs.
And don't forget this, in June of last year, the Supreme Court redefined the Affordable Housing Act.
Yes.
To the fact that they could put, any company could put a housing complex, low income, in any area and housing resident in this country, including in the more, uh, affluent neighborhoods, and the people couldn't do nothing about it.
And so, I know.
You see what happened in Bridge City last night, huh?
Yes, sir. And, 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 and have people been paying attention to what happened in China, Texas? Which is not over, by the way.
No.
Not over. That's like, is far from over.
And the political system, the people who went office involved in that.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, there's a lot going on, and, and credit to Mr. Mosley for fighting the good fight, continuing the fight of his father, and thank you all for going over the history, which is why in conversation with, with Mr. Dusbet, and there was a previous article where Mr. Mackey wanted to change the mums rush, and that was back when the issue for, uh, position for Mr. Freeman, and Mr. Mackey tried to weave together changing the representation system in the city with the election for replacement, in which the part I said, no, 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 no. You handle that separately, and there is no rush, because it took court action, court action, to get the current representation system that we have in this city. And, and goes back to my remark last week about the whole business of indoctrination, and how we were so kept out of the system of leadership, in real leadership, not puppet leadership, real leadership, real decision-making, that right now, there is a vacuum, because we don't, some of us don't know how to lead.
But see, you got to remember too, and we go, uh, we, I'm, I'm gonna let you go when I say this, because you remember my opposition to, uh, the, uh, influence that was being projected by the newspaper to eliminate Council Seat Seven and Eight.
Correct.
And I even went against one of my friends for even thinking to do that, because Seven and Eight was put in place back during, uh, um, uh, the earlier years for just so African Americans could get representation. And all of a sudden now, we think, oh, well, African Americans are not the minor, minority in the city. That has nothing to do with numbers.
It, it doesn't.
Redistricting and gerrymandering, mandating has nothing to do with numbers. It has to do with control of the powers in the seats. And just to put this in perspective, nobody owns a seat. Somebody said to me, well, Mr. Mosley is running for, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, for, 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 uh, Shane, Commissioner Shane's, uh, uh, seat. I said, he don't own that seat. No, why do you think they have term limits? Why do you think they have elections? Nobody owns a seat.
The, the, and I, and I go back to what I said, that, and, and that's the way I refer to it and continue in public and on the air. It is an opportunity for the citizens in Precinct Three to take a look at two qualified candidates and determine whether their vision and their method of functioning is what they want and what they need, and not get involved into the personalities and all of the shenanigans that go on to confuse the issues.
Well, caller, I'm gonna let you go with that, but I'm gonna leave you with this. Uh, qualified, eh, who's to say? But I can say this, if you haven't seen any changes in the last eight years, that's what the big people up there say when they running for president. If you ain't seen no changes, but I can, I, you have seen changes on city council in the city since Mr. Mosley's been there a year and a half, I mean, uh, speaks wet sound.
Well, yeah, well, sir, let me, let me modify that statement about qualifications. As far as the law says, can run.
Yeah.
They, they meet those, so there we go.
Yeah. I could run, but I ain't.
Well, and, and, and looking at what's going on, it's easy to understand why you wouldn't. But the point simply being again, is if, if the nation will focus on it, and it's just not impromptu. So, let's be real clear. And when you look at newspaper articles and wherever you are living, make sure you, you consider the fact that when you read some of those articles, or those editorials, look beyond the words and try to imagine what it is you're trying to be told, because part of this whole issue is again, trying to control the minds and the votes of people in Port Arthur.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna read Mama Duke in a little bit, so you keep it locked.
Will do.
God bless. God bless.
You're listening to KSAP ninety-six point nine LPFM in Port Arthur, Texas. Studio phone number is area code four oh nine, nine eight two, zero two, four seven.
Hold on, hold on, eh, all right, you on the air there.
I'm caller, I just, uh, got off from working, I, uh, caught the gist of this conversation that you're having there today. And, you know, I was reading today's paper, and if I'm not wrong, I saw the editorial, or the editor of the paper endorsing Mr. Ron Carroll, who they continuing to tell us who to vote for. Uh, I mentioned that in, in the call I made to you, uh, yesterday, that, uh, he once listed all the council members and those who deserve another chance, and those who should be elected even, you know, before the polls open. Uh, but here, today's paper telling us to vote for, you know, Mr. Carroll. Not that we're not gonna vote for him, but why do we, why do they feel that we're not intelligent enough to know who we want to, to represent us?
I know you didn't ask that question. I, uh, 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 sister, I know you didn't ask that question. Why do they, do they think that we're not intelligent enough? Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Are you, really?
Well, I, I even.
Hasn't it been a, hasn't it been a history that I can't think for myself?
That's right, they're telling us who to vote for, and not only that, here you have a history of parents in a constantly trying to get it across that we want to be respected as citizens and know who we want to elect. I, I can remember Mr. Mosley, uh, doing an, uh, uh, a referendum, asking for, uh, funding to be allocated for downtown businesses. Um, and then when, when the, then he passed, uh, petition, got it passed, and then the council, uh, rewrote the, uh, the balanced question so that the more Port Arthur would qualify, and yet we haven't had any downtown businesses, uh, to, uh, qualify for renovating their building except government buildings. Those are the kinds of things that don't get by us.
And, and.
Is it that, why is it that Port Arthur is too good for its citizens? It says here, um, the town is too good for us, so we don't, you know, we don't have a right to, uh, vote for people who will represent us well. Uh, when, when company comes to town doing mighty glass, they lock the local people out as if we're not good enough to be seeing that company. We have got to get some understanding with the folks here that we are taxpayers in this city and we are honored to respect us and our wish.
Caller, caller, uh, ju- just, just hear me out for a minute. Um, okay. You asked a question, and you, and, and I gave you an answer. This is what I want you and many others to understand. A lot of that stuff you reading in the paper is not trying to influence African Americans alone. It is also, it is more or less trying to influence other nationalities to not to vote for African Americans. That, you, there is a systematic conspiracy for cer- yeah, for certain African Americans. It is a manipulation of not just African Americans, but also other people who are voters. You might, you, you, the, the, you, let me, let me say this, if it was an Oriental that was running, okay? Do you think for a minute that the paper would say something about the Orioles or the Hispanics? Because I've monitored them, and they have never said anything against any other persons that have been running that have not been African American. You, so, so, so this is a power grab that continues to be involved, and a person said racism the other day. But you gotta know how that racism is perpetuated. Yes, but you must be able to articulate how it comes about.
Let me, let me share with you a specific articulation. In, in the documents that, uh, was spoken about, that was in the lawsuit, uh, that I mentioned earlier about, uh, Lewis and Jean and Elgin and all. It was stated that, um, attached in little copies of pages one thirty-three and thirty-four are former Mayor Sadler's deposition that was given to the Justice Department during the Voting Rights Trial from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty-two. And those pages, they were marked, it said, escape and nine. And in his deposition, wrote similar follows, regarding the size of Port Arthur's black population in answer to a question asked by the attorney for the Justice Department. And his answer was, he said, well, Port Arthur has too many blacks to be able to adopt standards that's acceptable to our country. And a black population of twenty-five to thirty percent would be an acceptable level to integrate into a community if we had been able to plan things. And that's what you got to understand, folks, when people are telling us who we should vote for, and, uh, as a caller is saying here now, we have to mindful, be mindful when these people put folks that look like us in office. You got to understand that when they do, it is a reason why they will be there, because they will be managed by that outside power. Do you agree, caller?
I do agree.
The reading goes on to say, the report from the Texas Employment Commission and the commercial fishing wharf at that time indicates where the jobs are going. It said, if an individual has to leave town or end up committing crimes and will then leave town by going to prison, the majority of white citizens in this area are fair-minded people and are not racist. But the problem with this area are those who control the various institutions and use all kinds of lies and propaganda to keep the majority brainwashed by not informing. use all kinds of lies and propaganda to keep the majority brainwashed by not informing them with all the facts to make proper decisions." That's what we're trying to do at this station. And that's why they really want to shut this station down, because as the other callers just said, you shut the mechanism down to keep the people from getting information, so they be better informed, so they make better decisions. And as long as the majority are getting the benefits of a system that won't protest, especially when the leadership of the oppressed accept the status quo and allow themselves to be manipulated into neutrality, that's what's happening. We need to wake up. We got folks that you voted and put in an office, and they're sitting there representing you and telling you to get things done, and you see you're still in poverty. You see you're still without a job. You see your mom and dad are still working. And mom and dad see each other, they're not working. And families are breaking up because mom and dad's not working. When are we gonna stop putting people in office who are puppets for those few people who are benefiting off their sin? They raping their city dry. And we still put them in office. Why? Because they are friends, they're nice people, they haven't hurt or harmed anybody. But guess what? They still working. Them folks still got a job. They still providing for their families, they still preparing for their kids to go to college. And what are we doing? We leaving town to go find another job.
And we're complaining, and we're cavers because we don't want us to change.
I agree.
Well, my concern is that here in nineteen eighty-two, with the landmark case, Mosley case versus Saddle, we have not made any progress, even though at the time we had one minority on the council. Now we have a majority black council, but they're voting against each other's decision.
Well, I just said that, they vote themselves into neutrality, which means that they don't do anything, everybody's just neutral. We standing in the same place, we get the tiles are spinning and screeching and throwing smoke, but we're not going anywhere.
Well, did I get that wrong? Did you, did you, uh, um, do a petition to get the downtown area buildings, you know, so that downtown businesses could get, um, funding to renovate their buildings and things like that? And then when the, when the wording was presented on the ballot, you know, it was worded so that, uh...
It was about entertainment, it wasn't about an entertainment facility.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. That was the four B plan that I brought forward, and had a ton of people who worked with, I was more in store myself. We presented that to the public and said, "Look, we got some, we have an opportunity to utilize a tax system that allows us to benefit small business." And that was a full B plan for entertainment purposes, okay? What we did, we went through.
But it wasn't just for entertainment.
Well, the thing is, it came from Susan Combs, who's the Texas Controller of Public Accounts under Sports and Community Venues.
I remember that. I remember that, but I remember the wording on the ballot.
Was changed.
Was changed.
Right, right, it was, it was.
It was for the growth that, uh, the power, the power brokers would have preferred being happened rather than change that is needed, see? And, and one of the things I see with that four B project is that it mainly benefited governmental buildings, you know, or controlled buildings rather than really stimulated business, small business development.
But recognize this caller, that was during the time that they had the eleven issues of the charter change, and they did not distinguish the difference between that, and they made it item number twelve as though to influence people that it was a charter change. But item number twelve got sixty-six more percentage than any item on that charter change.
And also, let me just clear so that you know, it wasn't just for, for the Breeze radio station?
That's right. I was, I'm aware of that. It was to stimulate small businesses and development for that area, but yet it only goes to where the power brokers want growth to take place. And yet, here we are, thirty years later, talking about redeveloping the downtown area, and it still hasn't happened, yet we have, we have our county commissioner bringing to the council D and X and property so we can help another city, another city's business area to grow while ours just rock on the vine for thirty years.
Yeah, well, it's unfortunate that we have to.
And we're still talking about downtown renovation, are we gonna talk about it another thirty years?
Well, I, I hope that we don't. It's just unfortunate that, you know, the person sits in office now in the congressional seat for four years, and if you get another four years like we had the last eight years, then you've got twelve years of inactivity. And I just don't understand how we as a citizen, as a, as a full city can sit here and expect change routinely every year, every year, expect change, but we keep putting the same people in office. I'd just like to say, say, a man who keeps doing the same thing over and over and over again and getting the same result, but expecting to be different is a fool. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, if you keep putting somebody, the same people in office, and every year you're expecting change, you're expecting change, you're expecting change, and it never happens, but you keep putting that same person in office and with no change, then what do you call yourself? I mean, I'm just, I'm just baffled how we continue to keep doing that same thing.
All I'm, all I'm saying is that we gonna wait another thirty years for something to happen in our inner city, mainly because, you know, for the last thirty years, I've seen the town just been literally ticked up and moved out from under its roof to the north end. And here South County, the South County town is still not making progress, and every Saturday we've been electing so far has not helped. So we have to change.
Makes sense. Makes absolutely good sense. We sincerely thank you for your call.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Take a two-minute break, if you'd like to call. Appreciate your call. You on the Breeze radio station ninety-six point nine, on your FM dial?
You know, Chief, just, I know exactly what the caller was talking about, because, about that petition that had been planned, because people would ask, did this just have to do with the Breeze radio station? I told them, no, it has to do with businesses here. But the, one of the reasons we were ejected is because of the media putting forth that we were trying to get the money for entertainment. Because that's when, that's when that councilman challenged you, not challenged you, but really tried to push it anyway, in you window to you when you were trying to make a presentation. We made the presentation to EDC, we made the presentation to the city council. And if you remember, I raised my hand and I said, "Holy," when that councilman told you that, uh, they didn't, they were not gonna give no funding for a hobby. So I understand what she's saying, but that was not the rea- and they did change the wording, but that was not the reason that we pushed forth that petition. We pushed it for the businesses in this area.
Well, here's what I pushed it for, and it's described clearly under the Sports and Community Venues, that Susan Combs, the Texas Controller of Public Accounts, and who I talked to her, and also Robert Ashton, who was the guy who's over these whole projects. And it said, "Type B sales may fund additional project types, including quality of life improvements."
Yes.
"In addition to all projects authorized for type A corporations." Then it goes on to say that "Type B corporations may use funds to acquire or pay for land, for buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the Board of Directors of the EDC to be required or suitable for use." For what? For professional and amateur sports, including children's sport? So if it's a hobby, it covers that. And for athletic facilities, tourism, and entertainment facilities, convention facilities, public park purposes, and event facilities, including stadiums, ballparks, order terms, amphitheaters, concert halls, parks, and open space improvements, museums and exhibit halls, related stores, restaurants, concessions, parking, and transportation facilities, related street, water, and sewer facilities, and affordable housing.
And see, and see, this is.
That's all that.
All that was there.
All that was there.
And the people overwhelmingly voted to have it.
Exactly.
But years later, they come up with a whole bunch of malarkey, I call it horse manure, to get B out there again, to get this now, this affordable housing out there again. The thing was already done. Four hundred thousand dollars a year was supposed to be set aside to take care of that when we got that petition passed.
For three years.
But yet still and all, people who sit on that council now, and on that EDC, they doing this same thing over again. It's like fighting the Civil War all over again.
Yeah, you can expand on that, you can go further in the, in the law, and it says, "To promote and develop new and expanded business enterprises."
It was already passed.
"That create or retain primary jobs. A Type B corporation may provide funds for public safety facilities, recycling facilities, streets and roads, drainage and related improvements, demolition of existing structures, general municipal improvements, maintenance and operating costs associated with projects, and any improvements or facilities that are related to any of those projects, and any other project that the board determines will contribute to the promotion or development of new or expanded business enterprises that create or retain primary jobs."
Chief, that was.
That was the four P B plan.
That was the whole thing. And the ignorance of the people, of people in power, saw it as a chance to stop the Breeze radio, when it wasn't about us. And now they come back with a whole lot of the same stuff that we already took care of. I mean, come on, how ignorant, and common, hey caller, you out there were talking about common hall sense. Everybody ain't got common hall sense. Because they keep repeating the same thing over and over again, and what they'll do, and yes, I'm talking about you, and I know, you know I'm talking about you, you'll come back with that rhetoric, because I had the man sitting right there in that chair, and I asked him those very questions, I said, "You rewording this stuff? You, uh, we already did that. Well, this is what, I got a procedure here that I gotta go by, and this is what I gotta go by." Horse manure, okay?
Well, let, let me do this, because this is what I'm trying to tell you, how you have to be mindful, the people that you associate yourself with. And that's why I say, you know, there was a, there was a big fundraiser for Commissioner Senegal, was hosted by Judge Carl Griffith, Randy Reese, Paul Beers, Mr. Whitey, Senator Carl Park, and others. And with that same issue you're talking about, these are some of the same folk who, you know, were in the mix, in the sense that not only criticizing the radio station, but really, really, it says, hope that they could, we would go off the air, because this way, they don't have to deal with us, they don't have to hear from us, and they could stop other folk from being the other side of this conversation. See, that's, that's what's important.
Caller, you on the air.
Hello there, C House, and hello there, Mr. Mosley.
Hello, hello.
Yeah, they got afraid, they get radio station, never go off the air. We need it, they're in poverty, and the people need to get real and get right and do the right thing. We gonna keep staying in the same situation that we're staying in, as long as the boss hogs, keep on calling the shots.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Stand up, sir, just stand up. You're doing a good job at that station, I know you're gonna do a job, a good job if you become the commissioner. But one thing I just wanna tell the listeners, we'll keep going in reverse instead of going forward. We have good people running for office, but we keep putting puppet feet in. You get what you're sold. My daddy told me that a long time ago. I've been running and running and running, but I'm standing still and now I can see the picture because I can see the forest along with the trees. We need to stop, stop letting people dictate what we need to do, especially as a culture. We need to come together on one accord and work together for betterment of us, Port Arthur. I understand we talking about county, uh, of, uh, county stretches and everything like that, but let me tell you, from Port Arthur going down, they have people that's running for office, but they going for fellowship, they going for friendship, and they going for all these different paths. They need to stop it and find out what's good for you. Find out what, if the county lady's talking about something that you gonna benefit, yeah, but don't just put nobody in office because of popularity. I got a father with that.
Absolutely, I, I hear what you're saying. T. House Moore Sturz got to step off, he's leaving, so I wanna thank you for joining in today, and I thank you for your call, caller. Well, yes, thanks for listening, yeah, thanks for listening.
What's he all say?
He said, "Keep it rolling."
Yeah, we gonna keep it rolling, we gonna keep it rolling. I'm standing in front of my house now, with this Edison project, I don't know how they built it, but we still in court, but you know what? I'm just gonna keep on praying on it, and one day, my voice will be heard.
I know, that's right.
Thank you, I enjoy you, I enjoy you, I don't wanna keep you on the radio all along, but I just wanted to say, don't steal words.
Thank you for your call, and, and just keep fighting, bro, because it's people like you who have, who've come out of your comfort zone and have taken on the, the top brass. You know, when you take on people like City Hall and those folks at the top level of government, it's not easy, it's painful, it's tiresome, you know, people talk about you, folks complaining about what you're doing, not, not everybody's happy about it, you know? But at the same time, at the same time, there are other people who are supporting you that you don't, may not even know about. They believe in what you're doing, they may not step out there, and they may not open their mouth, but they may go to the polls and vote for you.
Yeah, another thing, a lot of people don't understand with this Edison project. I put my life on the line every day, if you really look at the, uh, the picture.
Absolutely.
You know, but when I look behind and don't see nobody, guess what? That don't stop me. I continue to go on because I go on for right. I know it's wrong what's going on, that he talking about building all them downtown houses, but they have a father, but they didn't have a father to come across the state from my house in Edison, and they're low income, but they don't want it over there. See, what they're trying to do is make sure we gonna be able to cross Houston Avenue again like we couldn't cross way before. People need to wake up and see what's going on, because I'm telling you, it's a, it's a conspiracy that they gotta wake up for us too late.
Well, the thing about it is, you know, you, you have to be mindful of players, don't you agree? You have to know the players.
The players, the players that comes right back. Who's playing the game? Who's, who's the quarterback?
Once you start seeing the faces and the names come out for who they're supporting, it's kinda like Ppolitics three dot com. If you go to that site, you see, they were always indicated, well, they call boss hog, they call us, that's boss hog, they call him, you know? They, they grouped the pack and supported five or six members on city council. And so when you look at the votes and you find out how Councilman Lewis and Scott and I seem to always get outvoted, you got to wonder why and how is that, that these other folk don't see it like we see it? I mean, it's, it's almost, it's black and white, so obviously, either they don't know, don't understand, or they've been told what to vote for.
I just don't care. You know, I hate to say that word, but they act like you just don't care what's going on.
But brother, they look just like you and me.
Yeah, but looks can be deceiving, they been doing this since back in the times.
That's what I, that's what I.
That's how they control us.
That's what I.
They doing it again. You know, but I, I love this show, and I thank you guys, I think I do all stay to work at C House, I love it.
All right, brother, see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Have a good day, please. Just, just to, to, to finish up. Just, just to, 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 um, finish up on that business about the four B plans that I read you, that, that money was used, was going to be used for, that we as a radio station went out and educated the public and the public say, "Yes, we need that opportunity because we can apply and get money from that four B plan." That was over one point two million dollars for a three-year period of time and could be extended another three years with two-thirds votes from the council. But here again, you have to understand what these people are, okay? You got to know the players. You got to know the pla- and then you got to ask yourself, "Why are our, why is my, why is my representative, why the guy, the woman I'm voting for, why they stuck up under those people? We know how those folks are. We see what they're doing to our community." Well, your, your editor, a publisher and editor, Mr. Rich Mack and Roger Cowes, they wrote in, uh, the editorial page of Port Arthur News Friday, June the seventh, two thousand thirteen, they said, "Using E D funds for radio stations is a bad idea." They say, "Steven Moses, the Breeze Radio Station is asking to blur the lines between government and media." Now, folks, I just read to you what the government said. According to the article, the government prescribed that the money could be used for. So how am I blurring the lines? But since you don't have a radio station or you got a radio station, they're trying to suppress and keep you from knowing, they can write it in a newspaper and they feel you're not gonna say anything, you got an answer because folks don't listen, they don't read the newspaper. That's what they bank on. They said, "He led a petition drive and through the citizen initiative process forced a proposition to be placed on the May eleventh ballot. Voters approved it by sixty-six to thirty-four percent, making up to one point six million dollars over four years of Port Arthur Economic Development Corporation money available for entertainment and related infrastructure." Now, just so you know, at that time, that was an election with the mayor's race and everything else. And when folks didn't realize that the proposition twelve garnered more votes than the people voted for the mayor. Yes, they did. So that showed the folks were more concerned and interested in proposition twelve, getting infrastructure funding from the E D C than who's gonna sit in the mayor's seat. That ought to tell you something. They say, "Now he's made a request for E D C money, not for creating jobs, but for building and operating a radio station. We think that request should be denied." He's telling the citizens what to do and the citizens already voted what they wanted to do. We didn't make them vote that way. It said, "During its life, the Breeze, a low-power infra- radio station that operates as a not-for-profit entity, has experienced firsthand what could happen when radio waves or any other form of mass media is used to criticize the government." Yep, that's what we were doing in City Hall. We were criticizing the government because the taxpayers were complaining that they still got busted up streets. That's two thousand thirteen. Now they got high weeds and grass around and they wanna know what's happening to the money while we can't fix and tattle raggedy houses, while we still got dope dealers and stuff in our neighborhood. The pu- the public wanted to know, so we were telling them. We were telling the citizens who was messing up with their money, where the money was going, the travel expenses, illegal travel expenses. That's what we were telling the folk, folks using the P card. The mayor and council members were using cards and buying, uh, items that were not, that were ineligible expenses using the P card. So we were telling them, so we were criticizing the government. And so he says in this article, "That's what they get for criticizing the government." They got kicked out of City Hall. He said, "The station was once housed in the City Hall complex after some community affairs programming that involved one political faction and the city criticizing the actions of another in the city, completely legitimate in the world of talk radio," he says. "The station suddenly had to move out of City Hall." Well, no, we didn't suddenly move out of City Hall. We knew it was coming, we planned for it. We'd already talked about we were gonna have to move because we know sooner or later they were gonna try to kill the airwaves from the citizens and we had prepared for the move. He said, "The station suddenly had to move out of City Hall. The connection was never officially made, of course, but it never pays to blast the officials that housed you." Well, guess what? The officials were citizens of Port Arthur. The problem with the Breeze asking for more government money aside from other more pressing uses for the E D C funds is the question of how would the station management be independent to honestly express opinions about the government that funds them? Well, we thought that's what we were doing from the beginning. We were honestly expressing our opinions about what the government was doing. Isn't that dumb? This is a publisher writing. And how would listeners know that the E D C or the city council wasn't insisting on how some opinions or issues were handled or ignored by the radio station? Nope, we didn't ignore anything. In fact, the council members ignored us because we always asked them to show up. Not only that, we gave all the council members their own radio show. We gave offer to the city council, the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, the superintendent of schools, all the refinery plant managers, we gave...